Well, good evening. Before we call this meeting to order, I'd like to welcome everyone back to the City Council Chambers. This is our first in-person meeting since March of 2020. So, welcome, everyone. You may notice some changes in the council chambers, including in our AV system here. We have new microphones, we have new cameras, we have new high-definition monitors, we have new seating in the council chambers, which makes it much more flexible for use of this room. And we've got assistive listening devices on order, so we'll soon have those available to folks who need that support in the council chambers. I just want to go over some of the protocols we have for in-person meetings, since it's been so long. If you wish to speak during the meeting, during public input, you'll need to fill out a card. They're available in the back of the room, basically, so we have your name, and it gives you the option of speaking during public input. Or, since we're back to our in-person meeting rules, you do have the option of speaking at the time of an agenda item, but we need to know that on your card, so the meeting, presiding officer of the meeting knows when to call on you. Comments can be up to five minutes per person. You do speak once during a meeting, however, same as during virtual rules. And we ask that if you are not fully vaccinated, to please wear a mask during the meeting. We'll be, we're complying with the Phase Five guidelines, the CDC guidelines. What else? I think that's most of what I wanted to cover. I wanted to let you know that Darcie Sandifer is here tonight. She's serving as the interim deputy city clerk, so we want to welcome Darcie. And if you are listening at home, you have the option of, of course, viewing the meeting. It streams live during the meeting. We also are broadcasting on UP-TV, and the meeting is recorded and will be rebroadcast several times after the meeting's over. If you want to provide public comment via email, you can always do so at, by emailing citycouncil@urbanaillinois.us, or contacting your council person in other ways, phone or written correspondence. So, again, welcome. It's wonderful to be back in person. It's wonderful to be here with our city council, who was seated on May 3rd, and we're ready to go. So, this meeting will be chaired by Chandra Bishop, and I'll turn this over to her to do the committee of the whole meeting. And remember to press the button. Just a reminder to council members, if you want to speak, press the button on your microphone, and when you're done speaking, be sure to turn your mic off.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone, and welcome back to council chambers, and welcome to my fellow new council members. It's glad to be back here. I'd like to call this meeting of the Urbana City Council Committee of the Hold to Order. Will the clerk please call the row?
Ms. Wu?
Here.
Mr. Evans? Ms. Hersi?
Here.
Ms. Colacetti?
Here.
Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Wilkin?
Here.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here.
Okay, thank you. The first item on the agenda is closed session. I'll entertain a motion to enter closed session to consider security procedures pursuant to 5 ILCS 120-2C8.
I'll move that we go into closed session to consider security procedures pursuant to 5 ILCS 120-2C8.
I'll second.
Okay, moved by Jaya, and second by Sharice. Thank you.
And we'll need a vote.
Oh, yes, would you, do we call the row, or just say, I?
Well, row call.
Okay. Will the clerk please call the row?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes.
And we'll be going upstairs to the executive conference room.
Okay, I call this meeting back to order after our closed session. Do we need a row call? Yes, will you call the row? Clerk, please.
We need a motion to come out of closed session.
I'll move that we come out of closed session. I'll second.
Thank you. And will the clerk call the row?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is approval of minutes from the previous meeting of June 21st, 2021. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the minutes of June 21st, 2021. I'll second.
Moved by Hersi, second by Wu. Thank you. Approval of minutes. Are there any additions or corrections? Jaya?
I just have one correction. On page three, it says, "Council members, Colacetti suggested using an alternative response model like WENOR." I believe what I was saying is that we should have an evaluation of needs prior to committing to any one model.
Thank you. Anyone else? Grace?
Thank you. I had another one, also on page three, on item number eight, the second paragraph there about positions being moved to civil service as of June 1st, it says, but I think June 14th is more accurate, just on the list that we had agreed upon. And I think it could go without the word "prior" council approval, just without council approval altogether. So, the 14th, and I think the word "prior" could go.
Okay, so, the minutes have been corrected by Jaya and Grace, and so we'll have a vote based on those corrections, with those additions. Clerk, will you call the row?
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes, point of order, could we do this with a voice vote at this point, since we're not on Zoom anymore?
I think we can. I hadn't consulted with the attorney.
Just for future reference.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes. Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
That motion passes. Are there any changes or additions to the agenda? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to public input. Anyone who wishes to speak, would you please fill out a card and bring it to the clerk? I have a couple here. I will call Brandy McCoy.
So, first, I just want to say that I do hope that, in the future, we might consider a more hybrid option for public input, as I believe it provides additional accessibility to people who have a hard time speaking. And like a million other groups, it's just more accessible, and I think the email option is nice, but I don't have a lot of faith that there are a lot of people going through the public record to read the emails that are sent in, so. But anyway, I would like to talk about a friend of mine who has PTSD, along with other disabilities, which make fireworks a difficult situation to manage. On Sunday, they sat in their home, her neighbors were drinking and shooting off fireworks. The later it got, the drunker they got. Eventually, they began shooting the pretty explosives in the direction of a nearby power station. My friend had increased concerns for the safety of her neighbors and for her own, as she struggled to cope with the holiday. Thankfully, no accidents occurred and no injuries were reported, but as concerns boiled, Claire found, Claire found themselves with no viable options for support. She could call the police, sure, but she was afraid that someone would be abused or lose their life. Her concern for everyone, her concern was for everyone's safety, and she would not have felt safer, given a police presence. Distrust between community and police is poison. It fosters an unsafe environment for civilians and police officers alike. Here, the trust is clearly broken, as people repeatedly have stated. How often do citizens forego calling the police because they fear a violent outcome? Just because some people have an experienced oppression at the hands of police and thus disregard its existence does not mean that none have been oppressed. With the violence in our community, we need to consider better, smarter, and more effective options. Individual officers with good intentions cannot offset the oppressive nature of the institution. Policing hasn't worked thus far, and it won't suddenly show us the results we need. People do not commit crimes because they are crazy, evil people that need to be removed from society. We commit crimes because we're desperate, because we're resource insecure, and because we feel there is no other choice. What we need is support. What responsible model of social funding would spend more money to punish those for breaking the rules than to create an environment where the rules need not be broken? The violence won't end until we point our strategy in the direction of restoration and support. We must help our most impoverished and underprivileged community members to thrive in order to find light at the end of this long, dark tunnel. Let's start taking the police out of the solutions and figuring out what really works. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll have Alan Max Axelrod.
How does the clock start? Do I just start speaking? Thank you. So, Alan Max Axelrod, City of Urbana. When people who don't like each other start to work together, there's usually a really strong reason as to why. When people are making good-faith gestures, whether they're walking the streets with us, whether they are reaching through intermediaries to suggest amended language in the particular demands that are being pushed for the short-term workforce training program, or the support for workforce training program, known as SWIFT, that should be notable. There are organizations in this community that have done beyond just the simple passive-aggressiveness towards each other, that in response to the increased community violence are working together, and among the solutions that they are working together on, they are working together for saying that the cities of Urbana and Champaign should increase support for SWIFT. The support for SWIFT would, in particular, increase ideally the enrollment, be paired with violence intervention programs, such as the Richmond Model and other programs that more or less pay people to keep their noses clean, as well as dedicated boots-on-the-ground outreach in those underserved communities, which we walk, to make sure that folks are enrolled, that they make it through, and at the other end, they do not have to do things that make our community unsafe in order to maintain their quality of life. This isn't simply kids shooting, this is, where did those guns come from, too? And how do you get folks that may or may not be responsible for that to choose something safer for them and their community? An additional point that is particularly important, as some people are like, "Why are you talking about a community college program? These are kids that are engaged in this violence," is that, unless I'm mistaken, a high school degree is not required, nor do I think a GED, nor literacy required in order to participate in the SWIFT program. So, why not these kids, too? The particular urge or demand that the Champaign or Urbana Democratic Socialist America, among other organizations, including organizations that, again, not even on the left side of the spectrum, maybe, just maybe, even back the blue, is that we want the cities of Urbana and Champaign to come together, and maybe even the county, to use the American Rescue Plan funds to provide this benefit. Yes, it's a temporary benefit, but so would the impact outlast those funds? If we are able to turn around the violence in our community with a temporary use of funds, then when those funds go away, we don't necessarily see violence come back. We talk about generational wealth. This is how it gets started. So, that said, in an individual capacity, I want to address the comments that were made by Dean Hazen last week. When most people focus purely on physical safety, which is quite severe and easy to understand, people rarely educate themselves on the subtleties that help people with mental safety needs. And what Dean Hazen did last time he spoke to this body, as someone who was trying to sway the decision-making of this body, as a former alderperson, was he said that he felt sorry for someone having mental health issues, and he did so in the context of making cause to dismiss him amongst a string of statements saying to dismiss him, and no one spoke up about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll have Sarah Nixon.
Hello, City Council. Hi, this is Sarah Nixon. I would like to begin by echoing and joining in Alan Max Axelrod's concerns with regard to the fact that nobody on the council or presiding or present at the meeting, at last week's city council meeting, spoke up in response to a member of the public attacking another member of the public putatively for, you know, just speculating that they have a mental health problem, which, first of all, is concerning and uncivil. It's my understanding that everyone that knows that individual has no concerns about anything of that order, and that includes me. But whether or not you know this individual personally, I just have to echo what Mr. Axelrod just articulated, that it's unacceptable to attack people on the basis of a mental health issue, whether real, imagined, or speculated upon. And I would urge the council, I mean, perhaps there was just too many things going on at the last meeting, and, you know, this kind of slipped through the cracks, but I would really like to hear a public response to that, you know, very offensive and concerning conduct on the part of that individual who, you know, otherwise fully support their First Amendment right to express themselves. So, quickly, I'm here this evening to advocate for accessibility for everyone to city council meetings, and I think if there was, if there have been silver linings to the COVID pandemic, one of them has been that we have seen a greater access or ability by the public to access the workings of government. And we've seen that virtual access to public meetings, city council meetings, works. We know, you know, that government entities across the country are considering hybrid models moving forward. Some have already implemented hybrid models of attendance moving forward. So, as far as accessibility goes, limiting access to in-person only creates barriers for a lot of people, like me, and a whole range of others, people, for example, who have compromised immune systems, people with mobility impairments, people who are bedridden, people who are elderly, single parents who are multitasking of an evening and making supper, overseeing, supervising homework, putting children to bed, and yet finding time to participate in the democratic process. Limiting public participation to in-person only, or email, you know, email or written communication submitted in advance, creates huge barriers that do not benefit the public. This in no way benefits and/or promotes public participation in city council business, and it actually is, risks getting close to violation of the Americans with Disabilities Act, in terms of, you know, this act requires government, state and municipal government buildings and proceedings to be disability-accessible, and requires those government entities to provide reasonable accommodations upon request. So, again, I am here to urge the city to, or the city council, to very seriously examine the option of continuing a post-pandemic virtual access platform for the public to participate in your meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wished to speak during public participation?
Yeah, I would like to speak. Hi, I'm Tracy Chong. I'm going to comment a bit tonight about the Civilian Police Review Board TASER reviews. So, I hope that the issues that we've brought up and raised concern with council members are not forgotten. When will we be discussing the two TASER incidents where there was officer misconduct and suppressed evidence? I hope we do actually discuss it, because council members did say that you were concerned after watching the CPRB meetings. Also, I'm not sure if the new city council members are aware, but when Deputy Chief Richard Sills was in charge of TASER reviews, he decided that UPD no longer needed to show footage of TASER displays when a TASER is shown. But this is actually an ordinance violation. The ordinance clearly says that CPRB members do need to review all TASER displays, not just discharges. So, I don't know, I guess I'm asking, how is it okay that UPD's deputy police chief can just come in and, as he's presenting to board members, complain and complain about the workload, complain about how he has to redact the videos, whine, and like, try to get sympathy from CPRB members, and then kind of encourage them to violate the ordinance? How is this acceptable to you guys? Also, I'm following up with the previous speakers, how is it acceptable that former council member Dean Hazen, I don't know, I guess it's just disappointing, embarrassing for him as a former council member to use mental health as an insult, and to use it as a reason to not listen to a person's opinion? Dean Hazen also sent a letter to each of you, telling you guys not to listen to people like me, who brings up concerns, who brings forth concerns to the council. More than a year ago, I brought up how former city clerk Charlie Smith was incorrectly designating recurrent requested designations. So, and this was done as a means to create huge barriers to obtaining public records. So, this incorrect designation led to more and more illegal activities, such as illegal FOIA charges, which created like tremendous barriers to obtain records. So, what happened was that Charlie Smith and Urbana attorney James Simon and Kurt Berman, they all insisted that this was fine, this was perfectly legal. So, what happened was that, just recently, over a year later, I received, based on my appeal with the public access counselor, that in fact, it was an incorrect designation of, that I was incorrectly designated as a recurrent requested by Charlie Smith. So, I guess I'm just giving you this example, as how people would say anything to protect the colleagues and also the city. So, next time, when someone comes up here, or someone through public input, or anyone just tells you that you should not listen to this person and that person when they are bringing up concerns, maybe it is a sign for you to dig deeper and to be more concerned, especially if it's concerning public, police misconduct and government transparency. My last, my last, the last thing I'm going to say is that I'm curious again about the meeting times, like, why is it sometimes 6:30, sometimes 7:00? I guess this arbitrary start time and the lumping of the township meeting and the city council meeting into one start time is another hurdle to hearing, for public to give their opinion. For example, last week's meeting, everything started at 6:00. So, for example, in the past, we could come at 7:00 and be sure that we would not miss city council meeting and public input. And I think this is even more important right now, when it's in-person. So, someone has to plan in advance, and like, for people with public transport, I mean, you just can't, like, 6:30, 7:00, 6:00, like, when is the actual start time? Ma'am, I think you guys should decide on that. So, and I guess, is there a real reason why public input cannot be given via Zoom? So, I've been hearing the new city council members say that they really appreciate public input, so, and I really do appreciate you guys saying that. So, I think one thing, if you guys really do mean it, is to think about how public input can be more accessible to everyone, not just people who have the means to get here. I'm sure there's many people out there, like previous speakers have said, who would find it very difficult to come here in-person, like health concerns, family concerns, any other concerns. So, please take that into consideration. Thank you.
Anyone else would like to speak during public participation? Are there any presentations, or we'll just move on to staff reports? Are there any staff reports? Mayor Marlin?
Just one announcement. I wanted to let folks know that the construction work has begun, or will begin shortly, on the Landmark Hotel, soon to be renamed. The developers have met the deadline, the July 1st deadline, that was outlined in the development agreement, and they are beginning to remove some of the roof materials and equipment on the roof to prepare for roof replacement and repair. So, that is the first step. That'll be followed by an appearance at the Historic Preservation Commission within the next month or two, to discuss plans for the exterior, and plans for the interior are underway, and we are, will be inviting the project managers to come to council to give you an update on the plans for the property, the new name, and et cetera. So, very good news on that regard. Secondly, I will, well, I'll just wait till input and communications to address the other thing. Thanks.
Could I request a three-minute recess?
Sure. Yes, we'll recess for three minutes, 7:40, we'll be back. Okay, recess is over, and we'll move on to Resolution Number 2021-06-028R, a resolution approving a City of Urbana Community Development Block Grant Program Agreement, Champaign County Regional Planning Commission Energy Efficiency Upgrade Homestead Apartments by Community Development.
Good evening. I'm here to bring this resolution forward.
I'm here to bring this resolution forward to you so that we can assist in a partnership with the Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity and the Champagne County Regional Plan Commission to do energy upgrades to the single-family, or it's not single-family, single residency occupancy on 306 West Griggs. The total cost of the project is a little over $162,000 and the City of Urbana set aside in their annual action plan for this fiscal year $75,000 to help with that project. So I'm recommending that we approve the resolution. Anybody have any questions?
Does anyone have questions for Sheila? Grace?
Thank you. This seems like a, you know, a good project with energy efficiency and in the affordable housing units and Urbana kind of sharing that cost with the other entities. And I was wondering if you could just give me a little background on how or why this particular project was selected?
The SRO came to us two years ago, Mira. They were kind of in transition and they were having some problems. They needed some rehab help with their roof. We reached out to the Champagne County Regional Plan Commission, knowing that they had funding that could help as well. In the meantime, they found another avenue to help their roof, but this energy efficiency program kept proceeding. We did not do any type of a request for proposal project for the grant since we were already in conversations with them. We set it aside in our budget to help.
Thanks. I had one more too. I'm just trying to understand. So the sub-recipient, the sub-grantee is the Champagne Regional Planning? And so they're, meaning they're the ones overseeing the renovations and upgrades?
Yep, and the contract, yep.
And do they subcontract out or is that like within them themselves?
They will hire the contractors, but they'll manage the oversight to make sure that they follow all of the state and federal regulations that come with this pot of money. You know, so for example, they had to do an environmental review, which is something that's always required in community development block grant projects. They're making sure that they're paid prevailing wages, which is what's, you know, required by DCEO. So there's a lot of pieces of the puzzle, but Champagne County has a lot of experience doing this and so it's a good partnership for Urbana, but doesn't tax our staff time.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have questions for Sheila? I'll entertain a motion to add this to the consent agenda or the regular agenda? Mary Alice?
I'll move resolution number 2021-06-028R, a resolution approving a City of Urbana Community Development Block Grant Program Agreement with the Champagne County Regional Planning Commission Energy Efficiency Upgrade for Homestead Apartments to the consent agenda.
I'll second.
It has been moved by Mary Alice and seconded by Chris to send resolution 2021-06-028R to council with, with recommendation for approval on the consent agenda. Any further discussion? Yes, Chris?
I just want to thank staff for doing this. This is the kind of stuff that I join council for and I really appreciate you putting this stuff, putting this together and I'm glad we're helping out that unit. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Next item on the agenda is resolution number 2021-06-029R, a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement for area-wide records management system, ARMS, support services put forth by IT and the executive branch.
I'll be making this presentation, our IT directors on vacation. So this, approval of this resolution will allow us to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with MetCAD. And we're in this transition period now between ARMS, which is at this point a legacy system where Urbana is the lead agency on behalf of multiple agencies for the area-wide records management system. And we're transitioning to a new system that will be, the lead agency will be MetCAD. And so we still have to maintain ARMS while we're transitioning to this new records management system. And as luck would have it, because he's a very skilled individual, the individual who was the ARMS programmer has been hired by MetCAD to be the programmer for the new RMS system. So this intergovernmental agreement will allow us to continue to pay for this individual's time as needed, which is, you know, is starting to decline, but in order to keep ARMS functional while we transition to this new system. And so I recommend approval. Happy to answer any questions.
Mary Alice, questions?
Carol, I just want to make sure I understand this correctly. So ARMS is a consortium that all of our agencies, Rantool, Champagne, et cetera, pay into that funds this position.
Yes.
Okay, so this individual was, is going to be working for MetCAD. MetCAD reports to City of Champagne.
Yes.
Still needs to support some of ARMS. So MetCAD is going to build the City of Urbana for the number of hours this person works. And then ARMS, it'll come out of the ARMS funding that we collect from all the other entities. So it's just like this kind of big loop.
It's all the same money.
Yeah, I just wanted to confirm that that was the process. Okay, thank you.
Chris?
Carol, for the taxpayers, could you maybe just do a quick overview of what is ARMS and what will be LORMs?
You know who's going to answer that question is the police chief, since he happens to be sitting here.
I've been accused of being too long-winded, so I'll try to keep it short. In 1983, Urbana built the first sort of AS400-based police database system locally. And over the course of the years, different agencies have sort of piled on to that. So in 1986, the University of Illinois Police and the Champagne Police joined this database system. And then within the last 10 years, Rantool and the county sheriff have also joined. So those are the five, we call the ARMS agencies and we share a common police database system. And so that, the AS400-based programming in that particular system, I've been told it's like trying to find a World War II pilot to work on it. And we found one in Tim Smith and he's so good, he's moving on to MetCAD to help with the onboarding of the new database system that has been, that has been agreed to and that project is like 18 months. So for this 12 to 18-month period, there might need to be some maintenance on the ARMS system, the old World War II plane, while we get the other system up and running.
Tell them what's in the system, the ARMS.
ARMS is police records, essentially. That's, that's our, that's our, that's our sort of our database of all the police records. So all the, the information that people want us to produce, arrests, everything from arrest reports to when we have contact with Bryant Seraphin, if listed in a police report, it would show up there. So ARMS is just, it's a general police records management system.
Grace?
Thanks. Some other questions about the longer-term part of this? So it looks like the LORMs, if that's how we say it, new system will be up by summer 2022 is the goal? Is that correct? And I was wondering, then what? Then does all of the ARMS systems switches to MetCAD operated by Champagne? And then would Urbana pay them versus in the past, Urbana's been the lead agency and the other organizations have been paying Urbana, correct?
So just as Mary Alice was describing, there's a consortium and everyone pays into the consortium. And then right now, the consortium, the ARMS, we'll call it the ARMS Consortium, they pay us as the lead agency. Then when ARMS is finally ready to go to sleep permanently, then we're, and we're, there's going to be some dual payments. We're overlapping systems, so we're all going to pay into the law enforcement records management system. Do we really say LORMs?
Sure.
Okay. So everybody's paying into LORMs then and will pay into LORMs and then LORMs will pay Champagne/MetCAD to maintain the system. It's always been run as, by the member, you know, the members all pay in and then they pay the lead agency.
And so they'll be simultaneous, like retire ARMS when LORMs is up?
Well, there's an overlap period, which is why, that's what this is for. You have to, you have to do both for a certain period of time.
And I think that this makes sense with this, you know, employment agreement to not hire someone else for the temporary thing and someone who knows it and is going to be involved in the new system. When I was looking at the dollar amounts, I was confused about the, if you could clarify, the grant funding and the up to $35,000 for the year, I was wondering if that includes some of the grant funding that was mentioned?
I'm going to have to get, I'm going to have to get that answer for you. I just don't know that off the top of my head.
Okay, that's fine. And I was talking about on page three, section four, the limitations.
Yep.
And I also found a few, I don't know, potential typos. I don't know if you, if you're interested in those or could email later or mention them?
That's, if you, if you want to send those to me, that's fine.
Sure.
Okay, any other questions for Carol about ARMS and LORMs? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to add this to the consent agenda or the regular agenda?
I'll make a motion to add resolution number 2021-06-029R, a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement for area-wide records management system, ARMS, support services to be put on the consent agenda.
A second.
Okay, it has been moved by James and seconded by Sharice to send resolution 2021-06-028R to council with recommendation for approval on the consent agenda. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Next, we'll have council input and communications. Sharice?
I just want to thank the public that showed up tonight to participate in this process. The other thing I would like to do is wish my grand, my mother a happy 85th birthday. Unfortunately, I don't get to have dinner with her tonight, but she's out partying at 85.
Would anyone else like to speak, council members? Grace, go ahead.
Thank you. I did want to thank the public listening and those who came all the way in person to speak. I agree that I think hybrid meetings are much more accessible. We're told that Open Meetings Act and legal direction were to be in-person, although I do think, at least my understanding of Open Meetings Act is towards accessibility as much as possible. And I think that in general and especially not being done with the pandemic yet, there are still lots of options for people's health and not having childcare and transportation and weird job hours. So I agree that that's an important one. And I did also want to address some openness about mental diversity and not, you know, weaponizing mental challenges or disabilities and accusing people of that. And even when there are, I think that this is, you know, a wonderful space for neurodiversity and all sorts of opinions and say that I would, I at least take all of the public input seriously. And I think that's all for now. Thank you.
Is there any more council input? Mayor, you wanted to speak?
Yeah, I'd like to address a couple of points that were raised tonight. First of all, I do understand it was confusing during the month of June with the different meeting times. The end of the fiscal year is always a very busy, it's the busiest time of the year for the city. We had public hearings, we had meetings, we had special meetings. And then added to that were some rescheduled meetings from the township with public hearings attached to those as well and extra meetings. So in order to accommodate all those meetings and to use council board member time efficiently as well as staff time efficiently, we scheduled them all to begin at 6 o'clock because we really had no idea how long each of those particular meetings would go. So I understand it is confusing and we try to minimize that happening. And now that we're moving into a more, hopefully a little bit less chaotic time, then we can stick to our published meeting schedule. But I do appreciate the, the extra, you know, added inconvenience that it may have added, contributed to folks. Secondly, on the issue of the hybrid meeting or continuing, continuing with Zoom public input, we have, it's the opinion of both our city attorney and folks I've consulted with at the Illinois Municipal League that once the overall emergency declaration is lifted for the state, that Zoom input will no longer be an option under the Open Meetings Act as currently written. And we need to be very, very careful to comply with the Open Meetings Act. And the most legally secure position for us at this point is to resume our public meetings in, in-person public input. And rather than going from one type of meeting to another and then potentially having to change once again. So, so we welcome public input. Again, people are welcome to, to email council members and we've done as much as we can to improve accessibility for those who do attend the meetings.
Sharice?
I just have a question regarding what you just said, Mira, about the, the email input. So when we get letters, emails from our, our constituents or whoever, it, it, for example, I have one labeled public input, would that automatically go to the clerk to be put in for public input?
Yes, and if you, if you look at your agenda on the back, it does talk about email input and it says copies of the emails will be posted after the meeting minutes have been approved. And emailed public comments that have public input on the subject line will be incorporated into the meeting record.
Okay.
James?
And I can assure folks that emails that come to city council also come to me and several other staff members and we read each and every one. So people who are worried about emailed input being read is not, don't have to worry about that. People do read it and council members frequently respond to individual emails and that's fine too. As well as, as I do as well.
James?
So I'm curious, if I, if I get a request from a constituent via email for public input, will I be given five minutes during public input to read their, their statement?
You know, we, we didn't have a hard and fast rule with regard to that in the, in the old days. Sometimes council members would choose to read an email into the record on an individual basis and that was done.
But we, we would do that during public input, right? As opposed to giving up my council three minutes to say something? Because I would be happy to do that for my constituents.
We don't routinely read every email into the record though. But if there's one that you think is especially relevant or important to read, then you have that option.
Mary Alice?
Just to add to that, I know that in the past, sometimes people have written for a specific thing on the agenda and council members will have, will, will read that portion of it at the beginning of that agenda item.
Grace?
And so you're saying when the email is sent to the city council as a group email address that says public input for this date, it's automatically included? I feel like the clerk's on there, because I feel like there has been some confusion. Or if someone emails council members individually, then what's the proper thing to forward it to, the clerk to include?
Yes, yeah. It needs to be labeled public input because sometimes people don't want their emails included in the public record. They don't want them read aloud during the meeting. So we have to respect individuals' opinions on whether or not they want their email to be included in the public record. Sometimes it's just, you know, to the city council and that's it. And we respect that as well.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, seeing no further business before the committee, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you and good night.